You're super quiet. I can't hear you. It says you have headphones plugged in. You have like a headset on your desk that is picking up your mic maybe? Somehow your mic is just really quiet.
Call in from the phone. It works perfect.
Yeah, maybe he stepped away. Okay, we are live, just so you know. Chairman, do you want to start? Do you want to give a minute for Mr. Stern or a minute for Mr. Renner to figure out his audio?
We don't have a quorum without Mr. Renner. I want to make sure that.
Do you hear me or you don't hear?
Yes, we hear you. Yeah, you're very loud and clear. Loud and clear.
Thank you. I was just asking before you start, Ali, do we have two applications or one application?
We have only one application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ali, could you please read on certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the town chief of labor and 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Okay, thank you, Ali. Roll call.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern. Mr. Sable.
Here.
Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Yeah.
Mr. Isaacson. Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Ratzek, Mr. Fuentes, and Mr. Ackerman.
Okay, so, Ali, we have a quorum, right?
Yes, we do. We have five, and we are also expecting Mr. Stern.
Okay, swearing in of professionals.
Mr. Vogt, please raise your right hand. You swear from testimony we get before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
The board engineer and planner has been duly sworn.
Right. Okay, before, Ali, before we start the agenda, I would like to take a moment of silence for a dear friend, the passing of a dear friend, Mr. John Franklin, a dear friend of the planning board, a dear friend of everybody on Lake Will. He would truly be missed for all the help and from the wonderful guidance he always gave us. Okay. Okay, Ali, we can go on with the memorization resolutions.
Um, do you mind if I just carry that one application before we get into the resolutions? We have quite a number of them.
You want to do, I didn't hear you, Ali. Repeat yourself?
First, I want to acknowledge that Mr. Stern has arrived. I will mark him present on my notes. We have only one application that's carrying. Do you mind if we just make that announcement?
No, not at all. Please.
All right, so, application SP 2399 for 475 Oberlin Owner LLC. This applicant requested early this morning, I believe, or possibly yesterday afternoon, to carry this application to the next meeting date, which is February 2nd. They have already submitted, I believe, adjusting the parking and trying to address some concerns that they have been advised of, possibly either from the LIC or members of the public or members of the board. I would recommend that we make the announcement to carry that to the February 2nd public hearing date with no further notice.
Okay, thank you, Ali. I just have one question. They submitted revised plans. Is Terry giving a revised letter?
Yes, Terry's office is working on that now.
And do we have enough time before the second?
Yes, today is 14 days before the second, so the plans are here in time, and then Terry's letter will be done expeditiously, so you will have that before that meeting.
Okay. So, we don't need to, just you want to make an announcement, Mr. Jackson, we'll make the announcement. So, we'll move it over to the second, number two.
Members of the public be advised, SP 2399, 475 Oberlin Owner LLC at 475 Oberlin Avenue has been adjourned and will be heard on February 2nd, February 2nd, 2021, 6 o'clock in this virtual format. No new notices are required. No additional notices will be given.
Okay, thank you. On to memorizations.
All right, the first resolution we have is SP 2444. This is that major subdivision off of Cross Street where the board attempted to remove a unit and put in the top lot instead. That draft is available online if you had wanted to see it, as well as the plans with the location of that top lot.
And, Ali, do you mind saying who was present? I know I was. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to sigh so loudly. I need to pull up my notes digitally because I don't have last year's paper notes on hand, so give me one minute. Okay, present at the meeting for Cross Street is Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Flansbrough, Mr. Herzl, and Mr. Isaacson.
And Mr. Meyer. You check Mr. Meyer.
I believe Mr. Meyer stepped down on that.
Oh, he's involved in that one?
Yeah.
So, I would ask for a motion on number one.
Can somebody confirm that the sidewalk is going to go in where we discussed? I'm looking over the notes now. I do have a minute. On the plan, on the plan where they indicated the park, the playground, on that same sheet, they don't show the sidewalk down Trudy Lane towards Cross. So.
Mr. Sable, are those revised plans you're looking at?
I'm looking at the plans where they added the playground, so that's probably the revised plan.
Right, I'm not sure that the plans were revised to show the sidewalk. It might have been the playground, but let me pull up the draft.
I'm going to do it.
Recommendation, Chairman, if not done already, the resolution ought to incorporate that recommendation.
That's part of the.
Catching in compliance.
Okay. And you have it right there. Sidewalks.
But wait. Well, I think that's a general description. At the bottom, it says applicant shall install sidewalk along both sides of Trudy Lane, on both sides of Nassau Street.
Mr. Sable, is that okay?
I guess so, yep.
That's on the screen, okay?
The intent is open down to Cross Street.
Say that again?
The intent was all the way down to Cross Street.
Would you like that?
I think that's where we made a decision. I think so.
They own the property all the way to Cross?
No, the Yeshiva over there, and I think we require them to do both sides sidewalk and Trudy Lane. I think that was the discussion. It's been going back a while ago. As well, as well as the small part of, what's the other street name?
Well, on Trudy, they would be putting it down on their side, agreed to fill in the gap across the one lot that they don't own. And Nassau doesn't go to Cross Street, so they are doing the sidewalk on their side of Trudy. I don't recall if we asked them to put it on the school side of Trudy.
Ali, the resolution reads, I think, on both sides. John just read it.
They did it both.
Right, but that would generally only mean that it's up to their, along their frontage, so it. Well, it should clarify if that's the case. It should be, I guess, that should be edited.
I can pull up the minute.
Okay.
But Mr. Sable saying that it should go all the way to the intersection, and if the applicant agrees to that, I don't remember.
It was discussed.
Mr. Sable does.
Can't just change it now. I know it was definitely discussed. Here, Mr. Sable, I asked about sidewalks on the Yeshiva side. Flannery said whoever comes to build the other side would provide the sidewalk. Mr. Sable said no one's going to build over there. Mr. Vogt said the standard default is to have sidewalks on both sides. Mr. Feffer said we're putting sidewalk on our side.
Yeah.
As far as across, that land is not ours. Let's see if the board's motion specifies. I know the discussion continues on Trudy sidewalk. We talked about the clause. Mr. Flansbrough said if it's legal, they should do it. Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Sable, Mr. Garfield all agreed.
Agreed to sidewalk on both sides?
There should be sidewalk on both sides. I'm just looking to find the motion.
Agreed.
Mr. Herzl's opinion was that we don't need sidewalk on the opposite side. I believe what we're concerned about is sidewalk on our side, hot, hot lock and sidewalk. And clarified, they will join the missing sidewalk on their side of Trudy, where there was a piece of property they owned. We talked again about. And let's go to the motion, because this is public comment.
To approve with the following conditions.
Sidewalk along Trudy Lane Nassau and improving the extra area on Lewin. So I'm assuming, Mr. Sable, since it was your question and you're asking to modify the resolution, that you intended both sides on Trudy.
I believe that was the discussion, that was the agreement, unless somebody remembers otherwise.
Mr. Feffer's here for the applicant, and it looks like he'd like to argue that point.
Hi, good evening. Adam Feffer, attorney of the applicant. I recall that there was a conversation requesting both sides, but that we'd indicated it's not our property, it's not our side, we have no authority jurisdiction to put the sidewalk in. And we had agreed to put along anywhere that we own. We had no issue with it. And I believe that that was the conversation. I think that's what the minutes reflect.
I believe it was the chairman that actually said that the cost would be de minimis and the potential for the development will be great, and all the board members were on board with that.
It's not a cost issue. I don't want to be argumentative. I'm not questioning on the grand scale of this application. The problem is, it's not our property.
But, Mr. Feffer, it does look like Mr. Flannery said applicant has agreed to put sidewalk on other people's properties and to some things. This is really the board's decision. We request relief. I gave my reasoning. We've gone along. So we're requesting the board grant it. And then further on, he says, it sounds like my arm is being twisted again, and we aren't going to get that relief either. So it does seem that Flannery was aware the board was.
Okay.
Go further down the resolution. Go further down. Did the actual motion. Sidewalk on Trudy Lane, okay? So I guess that Trudy Lane means the other side, because on their side is not even a question.
Okay, Mr. Jackson.
Can you continue going down, Ali? Go down.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what the motion is, they gave relief. It sounded like Mr. Flannery acquiesced to a point. I thought there was a, or Mr.
Mr. Jackson, I do have a question legally. I also recall that's what the board wanted. I think that's what you hear from the board right now. But my question is legally, how can they put sidewalk on somebody else's property?
Well, it's not on somebody else's property. It's on both sides of the street that they need the improvements for safety to access their property. It's not like it's around the block. It's on the other side of the street that they need to have improved to access their property. I think there's a relationship. They're going to have more pedestrians, more traffic, and they have to improve both sides of the street in order for that to work. The sidewalks merely on the other side.
The street's already partially improved. If I'm correct, I'm looking at it properly. And I just checked with Brian. Brian said, again, he remembers the board definitely was asking for it, but that we indicated, we just don't have the authority to put it in.
Okay, Mr. Jackson says you do have the authority, because it's not private property.
Yeah, Chairman.
One second. Terry, Terry, please continue.
Yeah, as long as the sidewalk is within the right of way, I believe with the town's consent, there is authority to put the sidewalk in. If the design requires you to go outside of the right of way and, you know, you have to have a taking or, you know, some kind of grading easement, that's a different issue.
Ali, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I just said. I agree with Terry, Mr. Vogt.
Okay.
The resolution said it very clear. Sidewalk on both sides.
Yeah, I think it's both sides of the two streets. I don't think that's what it was referring to.
It's clear, both sides of Trudy Lane. The resolution, item number one. Very clear. Both sides.
The conditions.
Yeah, that's very, it's almost in Yiddish. That's clear in Yiddish.
Okay, so then the draft resolution seems to be acceptable to the applicant and, I'm sorry, seems to be acceptable to the board members and is the chairman seeking a motion on that?
Yes, I am. I asked for a motion.
I think the motion took.
Okay, do we have a second? It's written.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Garfield, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays on that? Anybody's opposing it? No, so motion carries.
Okay, the next resolution up is SP 2426, minor subdivision.
Okay. I think it's all the same people. I'll ask for a motion on that, on that application, number two.
Yeah, that was Mr. Garfield, Mr. Sable, Herzl, Renner, and Isaacson.
Okay, somebody make a motion then?
I'm Phil, make a motion, Mr. Vogt.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Garfield, second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay.
And for these last ones, it's Mr. Garfield, Mr. Sable, except Mr. Sable abstained on the MUA, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Renner, and Mr. Meyer.
Okay. So you want to, so I'm on, we're holding my number three right now, right?
2464 for the MUA, it's a per.
Okay. It's Ali.
Ali Renner moves. We have a second. Second, Mr. Meyer, all in favor? Aye.
2456, minor subdivision to adjust lot line.
Move.
Move, Mr. Meyer. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
2458, minor subdivision.
We have a motion.
I'm moved.
Mr. Garfield moved. We have a second. I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
And SP 2395, site plan for a school.
Okay, do we have a motion on that one? Anybody want to make a motion? Number six?
Move.
Okay, Mr. Meyer, move. We have a second. Okay, I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, we're on to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. SP 2405, particularly Wood. It is a major site plan apartment building. I mean, this is property that previously developed, may have had a fire at some point and has some reconstruction going on. I will let Terry start with his review better.
Okay, Terry.
All right, thank you, Chairman. I'm reading from our January voice review, beginning on the top of page three under submission waivers. You have partial waivers that are requested for proof of submission to the county, as well as traffic study, as well as waiver for any IFS. We support the waivers as written.
Okay, do we have a motion for a long and ingenious recommendations?
I'll move it, Ali.
Ali moved. Second, all in favor to grant the waivers? Aye. Okay, on to zoning.
Yeah, as indicated under Roman numeral two, one bowl variance is required, a minimum CIDR setback for proposed building complex two, 16.61 feet versus 25 required. And on the design waivers, waivers are sought for non-radio lot lines, which the board has granted in the past. Design waiver from providing street trees along Joe Parker Road and for landscaping for the new complexes and amenities.
Okay, Terry, Ali was saying that there was a fire on this, on this property. There was an existing building before and it burned down?
That's my understanding, Chairman. I see Mr. Arabak is here. He has a better feel in terms of the history of the site, but I think if sworn in, he could probably give history.
Yeah, no, no, my only question is, if they're building on the same footprint, are they grandfathered in or it's a total legal application?
Yeah, that's a good question. John and I were talking about that today. You can make a case that this should be an amended version of the original application. As I was telling John this morning, it's literally a 50-year-old application. The old design documents from D.W. Smith, I think, go back to 1971, which means that there's a 2% chance the documents are in the town basement, and because of COVID, there's a 0% chance we're going to be getting those in the foreseeable future. Being, being an engineer planner, I have no objection to just hearing this as a separate application. Practically speaking, we're, we're just not going to recover the old application.
Okay, no, my only question is because there are variances. So we're looking.
There's one variance, I believe, for side yard.
Okay, so we're looking at it as a new application, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and the application's a lot different than what was there.
Okay, so it's a different footprint, basically, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, Terry and Mr. Jackson. Who's the attorney on this application?
Good evening, Your Honor, Your Honor. Mr. Chairman, Michael Stanzian on behalf of the applicant Tavosi at Woodlake LLC, or Tavoli at Woodlake LLC.
Okay, do you have any planners, engineers, anybody?
Yes, we have our engineer, Mr. Lyons, who's on the call.
Okay, one haven't sworn in.
Mr. Lyons, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear from testimony I get before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I don't see Mr. Lyons. Is he here?
I think I just heard him.
Mr. Lyons, we don't hear, I didn't hear you.
I do.
Okay, now I heard you. Okay.
All right, Mr. Herzl, do you accept Mr. Lyons based on his appearance in planning and engineering, right? Okay, please proceed.
Mr. Lyons?
Okay. Let's go back one. There's, as far as the design waivers, as far as the submission waivers, that the letter indicated that they were partial, and we would be suing them after the application. We'd like to make those waivers submission simply. First one is submission Ocean County Planning Board. There's no improvements on the county road. The project design was previously developed, and there's no change that would affect traffic substantially. Also, the property does not front on a county road. If you look at the tax map, it's completely isolated within other lots. So we don't have any, we don't actually have any frontage on a county road that would require us to get county approval. And the location where the development is, is approximately where the block and lot number are on the parcel, and that's about 2,200 feet from New Hampshire Avenue, which is where the access comes in. The property. So we would request that be a permanent waiver that we don't need to submit Ocean County Planning Board. Second waiver was traffic study. I'll get into this a little further in my testimony, but we're proposing eight additional apartments as part of this application between what burnt, what burnt down, what are being removed. So out of 365, we're adding eight apartments, which is a 2.1% increase in, in units, and I think that.
Glenn, what's there now? It's totally burnt down?
Okay, I just, I can, no, not, it is not.
Okay.
And then I'll go through what's there and what.
No problem, no problem.
The last waiver was the environmental impact study. We'd like a full waiver on that because the area has been developed before. We're really just putting the buildings back where they were. So we're not, we're not doing, you know, we're not impacting the environment around the property. With regard to zoning, there's an error in our plans. I know that's hard to believe, but there is an error in the plans. The front page says 16.61 foot side yard setback, and on the site plan sheet shows 15 feet. So we are requesting a 15-foot side yard setback, and I'll go over where that, where that setback is required. Okay, so back to our site plan. Okay. So we need preliminary final major site plan approval to construct three apartments.
Could you point out, Mr. Lyons, could you point out where the, where the 15-yard setback is?
Yes, if. It's been a little, I don't know if we can. And now, okay. This is the new, this is the building we're proposing, right at that corner, 15 feet. That used to be 16.61 feet. What we're doing is we're putting in a new foundation to the building, and we're trying to make the two buildings even. The other building was 15.11 feet, so we're just trying to make this 15, make them, make them line up.
Thank you.
So our application is we're constructing the building you see on the screen now and a, and a parking lot to add additional parking. And then we are proposing two buildings along, along the main, main road and rebuilding the parking, which you can see there in gray.
Excuse me, Chairman, if I could interrupt briefly, please?
Yes, Terry.
Yeah, Glenn, I just had a question. You had mentioned the side yard setback is 15 feet. The last plans I have were from revised to December 1st of 2020. They are showing the 16 and change foot setback that's referenced in our letter. Do you have revised plans that we don't have?
I know these are the plans we've submitted to the board. I don't know what, I don't know whether this was revised from last time we submitted. Trying to see what our.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at your, your layout plan, sheet 14.
Yeah, this one, Terry, I understand why you're confused. Lyons sent me an exhibit that is revised through January 6th. This has not been reviewed by Terry.
All right, that, I, I just want to put on the. All right, that, I, I just want to put on the record because the plans that we reviewed were only revised to, to December and they had the sixteen foot. Yeah, Mr. Lyons has put the request on the letter, on the record, that's fine.
Yeah, and, and he's asking for the variance on fifteen.
Right.
Correct.
One, one point six one feet closer to the law. Yes.
All right, so.
Do you want us to mark?
If the board approves, it's going to be fifteen feet.
Right, right, correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lyons, please proceed.
Okay, so if, Ali, can you go back to sheet two, which is the existing condition plan?
Your office only provided me with this sheet, I can go back to sheet two in the original set from December.
That'd be fine, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't know we didn't, uh. Okay, so, um, this is, this is the existing condition. Back in around two thousand, the, uh, the five gray buildings that are shown on the plan, they were destroyed by fire. The two buildings on the left side, which is also the west side, the west side of the site, that has been reconstructed, uh, on the existing foundation. And, and that, and that building is complete and almost ready for, uh, occupancy. What we're proposing to do is ta- is, uh, remove the other three foundations, move the building on two, there'll be one building on the east side. Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, the east side, that'll be moved closer to the, to the other building. We'll go over that on the site plan in a minute. And then the, there's two existing apartment buildings, um, on the south side or the bottom of the plan. And there's a gray, a gray foundation, and there's also a garage. All four of those, uh, structures will also be removed. So if we could, Ali, can we go back to the site plan? So. So maybe there's one thing we can say, okay. Um, so our application is to build three, uh, new apartment buildings and, uh, provide additional parking on the east side of the, of the, uh, Easterly building and then provide, I believe it's, uh, I get the number here somewhere. And twelve additional spaces on the south side. So, uh, it's. Okay, so the two buildings on the south will be. Okay, so we have a total of eight units being demolished. And the two new buildings will have thirty-four units.
And Glenn, just, just to jump in real quick, just to clarify, so the, the new building, the new big building on the east side, that's getting shifted over to make room for more parking spaces?
Yes, it is.
So that's the reason that it can't be built on the existing.
Right.
Foundation.
We can't use the existing foundation at all.
Okay.
Right, okay, so.
Do you have any variance on parking?
No, we, we're actually, um, sorry, kind of lost track of my testimony. So during the, so we've lost forty, I want to go over this, but we've lost forty-six units during the fire. Uh, we're demolishing eight more, which is a total of fifty-four. Uh, we're proposing to, uh, construct. Proposing a total to construct, where did I have that, sorry. I'm worried mixing up my numbers too.
Guys, can I hop in please for one second?
Yes.
Well, we swear, Abe.
Yeah, you have to be sworn in.
Mr. Auerbach, please raise your right hand, do you affirm the testimony again before this court with the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you, uh, this is Abe Auerbach over here, so basically, and just as a recap, there was a fire on twenty-eight units, it's being knocked down, we're just, you know, moving, moving the foundation, rebuilding those and sliding it, we'd like to slide it. Same thing, just close it to the other one to allow for more parking, again, we have more than enough parking, want to add parking just because we feel it's the right thing to do and additional expense, the client want to add parking. As opposed to buildings in the front, we're actually, we are, we're adding a total of approximately eight units. But again, we are adding more than enough parking to adequately, uh, provide parking for the full site. Basically, there, there's two existing structures in the front which are being proposed to knock down and recon- recon- reconstruct the existing apartment buildings which are there. So just to make a long story short, we're adding, we're adding around eight, nine units. There's more than enough parking, we have parking twelve, twelve extra parking spaces to, to go ahead and, and more than adequate to provide all the parking which is needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, you have, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, we're taking down fifty-four apartments and we're building sixty-two.
Okay, so there'll be sidewalks all around the apartments?
Yes.
Okay, and the garbage is going to be B W?
Whatever they.
Yeah, I think it's private pickup as of now, that's staying the same, we're not, we're not changing it, that's all staying as is. It's, it's a whole site over there and all that's going to function as is.
Mr. Mr. Auerbach, I, I have a question for you, um, the, the site to the left, you know, the parking and everything is all, uh, related. I imagine the drainage and, uh, circulation, parking, uh, is it all under one ownership? I know it's your, the, this side is a.
Yes.
But, um.
It's one block and lot.
It's all.
It's all the same owner, all the same, there's no shared infrastructure, everything is the same.
Is it so, but, but there's lots are in separate ownership, right?
All one.
No, there's one big lot. We've shown that. Right. What we're talking about is right in the middle is a, is a small area in the middle of this large lot that's out.
Okay, okay, so we don't have to worry about cross-access easements or cross-parking lots because it's all one lot. All right, now, um, the, the, uh, Tavoli LLC, um, okay. I, I have a couple of questions that maybe you can answer them now from Mr. Zines, who, uh, wrote in since you're up and, and the board members might also want to know these as well. He says, how many apartments will be their total in the three buildings? Are they one or two bedroom apartments? Is there a sidewalk between each of the buildings and how many parking spaces there in total for these apartments? So I, I think the board members will also ask that, I thought those role, uh, you know.
Fair question.
Yeah.
Chairman, Chairman, do you want me to, um, pull up emails and do you want to open to the public?
Well, I kind of.
Yeah, please, Ali.
Yeah, it's, it's Michael Zucker speaking.
One second, one second.
Mr. Zines is, Mr. Jackson just read it.
Okay.
Mr. Zucker wants to speak, I'm not.
Yeah. Mr. Zucker.
Yeah, Michael Zucker, I'm not particularly a public.
You what, you're the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, uh, you have to be sworn in or affirmed, so Mr. Jackson.
Do you swear a firm testimony again before this court with the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I affirm.
Okay, Mr. Zucker, what would you like to add?
I want to make one comment, the reason why we're taking down these other two buildings uh, is to improve the street, streetscape of, of the frontage over there. Uh, great, this new building look with, uh, with what we're trying to accomplish over there. I mean, if, if you look at what we, the first building that we built, uh, we put a lot of, a lot of investment into the exterior of the building that, uh, that, that should look, look good and improve, improve the neighborhood. Yeah, I, I think you're going to see that the product we're going to build is, is going to continue to improve the, you know, the neighborhood. We plan on doing other work to the, to the existing buildings there as well. So we're just, we're just trying to continue improving the area.
Thank you. Uh, do any board members have any questions from the applicant or the engineer?
Is it open to the public now, is it not open to the public?
Not yet, uh, first, I'm, I'm first giving the board members, do you have any questions?
Can I make, can I make one other comment, the reference to the parking, there is, there is, uh, one sufficient amount of parking over there, uh, matter of fact, we were, we were, we, we allowed some of our, uh, commercial neighbors to use the parking during daytime, uh, we have parking straight down Pinehurst Road, which is, you know, which, which tremendous amount of parking that hasn't even been used all this time. We're managing this building for twenty years and there is no parking issue, uh, in that area.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do any board members have any questions from the applicant or the engineer? So none will open it to the public. Yes, uh, Mr. Sabal.
Yeah, the, the parking that he's calculating, the hundred and forty spots, is that including on the side of the old building? Or this is just dedicated, just do, uh, dedicated to the new building?
Those are, those are, those are just the spots in front of the new building and, and, and across, like across Pine, Pinehurst Avenue. It, it has not, it, it doesn't count any of the parking spaces that are near or in front of any of the other buildings. It's only those spaces that would be within convenient walking distance to their apartment.
It doesn't create any new variances for any other buildings, uh, deficient in parking?
No, actually, based on the number of apartments, we're, um, we're adding twelve, twelve additional spaces that are above and beyond the parking requirement.
Okay.
For our building, and it's nothing to do with the rest of the site. So just look at parking for these, these three buildings.
Any other board members have any questions? We will open.
I, I see the calculation.
Call is now being recorded.
Hello?
Yeah, Mr. Sabal, continue.
I, I'm looking at the, uh, at the, at the, at the plan they provided. They, they, they think they're using the parking that's adjacent to, I guess, on Google Maps, it looks like Tower Vision building, uh, they're building all the way to the right, if you're looking from south to north, they're building all the way in the right. That looks like a building that's already in, existing and occupied. Am I right? Yeah. This building, yep, this building, this, this building is what?
We're not using that parking, only the, only, see the numbers for the parking, where it'll say, you know, fifteen, seventeen parking space, whatever the total is. Only the one, I only included the ones that have two circles around them. Okay, so.
Yes.
See the one at the bottom, right, all of like the four, and it's, uh, Ali pointed out this one, it's a twenty, I didn't, I didn't count any of those spaces, only the ones that have a double circle, which are in convenient walking distance to these three buildings.
Do we, do we have a, do we have an aerial or a, a, a plan of the entire site, the whole complex? There we go. Are there, what, what other buildings and, and how big is the entire area that, uh, is this whole complex that, that's, for example, like, the, the survey that you showed us at the beginning, what would that look like from the air right now?
All right, so guys, this is Abe over here, guys, as you see on your screen over here, all this parking which, which you see now, all this parking is existing and constructed, and it's all empty, it's all the old tartan from the old infrastructure, which was pretty much was just left here and is just staying there. Whatever's highlighted there, right, in gray, whatever you want to call it, on the right side as well as the gray on the bottom, that's the additional parking, or the bottom that's, that's stomach existing, but all the gray, we're adding parking over there to facilitate all the, these extra, these extra units, but all this parking is, is and was designed exclusively for, for the, unfortunately, the units which all burned down.
Mr. Auerbach, was the, was there originally when, when the buildings were standing, that's where the parking lot was?
That's correct, we were not, we are not, all the existing parking which you see on your screen now is there and is staying there. The, what you see in the gray is being modified to add additional parking, but it's only increasing the parking. We're not, we're not, we, all this parking lot was, was stayed empty all the years, kids play, whatever, I'm saying, but it was not used. For this part, each, what they did was they used individual parking lots for each building throughout the complex. So this parking lot, as you can see, actually is empty because the buildings are unfortunately burnt down.
Okay, and, and what size, how many bedrooms are, are these units?
They're half ones, half twos, but why is that, if I want to make them twos, what, no, they're, they're all, they're, they're, it's a split, half and half, half ones, half twos.
And is, is there any open area for kids to play over here?
Yes, there is, there is a very substantial area in between the buildings that all the kids can play safely away from cars. It's just open, green space. No, as we're saying, the open space for kids, we're typical for apartments, apartments of size.
That's why I asked.
Complex, these are not a development where there's five bedroom houses, where you can have kids from all ages, you know, they're, they're, these are small apartments.
Mr. Auerbach, that's why I asked you, to say that, I want it on the record, it's only one or two bedrooms. You have some little kids over there and they can play in the middle, you don't need.
That's correct, no recreation.
There is, there is also a top lot further down the road near the clubhouse. And, uh, there is no basement, it's been made, built here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on a minute, we, we, we can't have a free for all here, you have to be recognized by the chair, everyone's just calling out.
Okay.
Chair, what I, what I would like to do with your permission is, uh, is share my screen for a minute, I have Google Earth. I just think it might be helpful, everybody looks at the overall, uh, neighborhood here.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, if we could share a screen.
Is it letting you?
It, it seems like it's letting me.
Yeah, I don't see.
Share, let's see, there we go.
There it is.
All right, so, so just for perspect, can you see my cursor on here?
Yeah.
All right, so this is your complex right here, the old complex?
Okay, um, where, where your cursor. Those are the units in the, all the way to the west end. So you have that first U-shaped set of apartments, then there's this second U-shaped set of apartments.
Are you upside down?
Am I upside down?
Is it upside down?
It, it's, it's opposite of the plans, yes.
Correct. And then.
Is that where I?
Thank you, Ali.
And then there's a, then there's a third U shape, okay, now we.
All right.
Anyway, so you can see that the first U shape is right here in the upper left-hand corner. The second set of U-shaped buildings is on the left side, then you have all that parking. And then these three white slabs, these three concrete slabs are the buildings that caught fire. And then there's, there's two brown roof buildings, those are, we're demolishing those. And there's a garage which is in the middle of the two brown buildings, we're demolishing that building off. And then the last apartment building that's existing is all the way on the right before you get to the, the golf course.
Okay, so Mr. Lyons, so this is kind of all self-contained right in here, right, where you're building where the, these, so you, you share this parking lot, but the, these apartments over here, it's kind of like a different community, right?
Well, it's, they share the parking lots in between the units. You know.
And so, Mr. Lyons, in, in between the U is where you have that open space from each section of buildings?
Right, where those, where those trees are, yes.
And you have that on the left and on the right, on both sets of buildings, you have open area for kids to play.
Uh, no, there's just, it's just, well, there's a front lawn in front of each building and then between the buildings. between the buildings where those trees are, it's in between the two building units, the, actually the three building units.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for any board members?
I have, I have a question, just to clarify.
Yeah, Mr. Sable.
Where, where, where the trees are in the middle, on that spot, I believe they're putting building number two. Complex number two, correct? On where the actual trees are now, they're putting complex number two.
Incorrect, Mr. Sable. This is, this is.
Okay, please correct me. I'm, I'm looking at the plan you gave us.
I'll be happy to correct you. Ally, can you please, John, can you have to stop sharing for Ally to reshare?
Existing building one and existing building two.
Mr. Sable.
Back to now, you're keeping up.
Which, eh, which plan do you want? This is perfect.
Good enough.
Okay. This is good, right over here. You have there 51 feet by the length of the building, which is all going to be open space.
Right. What are those little squares in there?
Uh, sorry.
To the left of the cursor.
Yeah, I'm not, maybe it's probably some overlay from one of the engineer who's perfect, maybe just left one from his old, from an old survey or anything, but.
They're not storm drains or anything like that?
I have to go back and check, even if they are, they're all going to be flat, like, like it's typical for any open play area. I, I don't think there's any storm drains in there. They're making one, a garden drain for containing water, but nothing which is not typical.
Thinking aloud, Chairman, they may be either patios or decks.
Okay.
Yeah, but Mr. Sable, all that space is 51 feet by 200, whatever it is, it's quite a bit of open space there for everyone to play over there.
Okay, no problem. That, that's.
Building number, the complex number one, that's being developed again, correct? It's being built up again. On the same spot?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Auerbach, you're not coming back on that space, 51 by 200.
That's going there, we're building there, we're not building.
I know, in the future, you're not coming back to build a future building there.
No.
Okay.
I'll, I'll email you.
Okay. No problem.
Mr. Auerbach, I'm sorry, I want to follow up, just to clarify, I think for the board as well. If you look at this picture, if you look at this picture, you're looking at complex, compare complex number one to complex number two. Complex number two, you, you indicated very clearly where the entrance is, where the sidewalk is going to lead. I'm sure it's going to be mirror image doing the other side, but we don't see that.
That's already built, Mr. Sable. Complex number one already is built. That was already rebuilt. 28 units, foot for foot, the old, the old fire that was recently rebuilt. Right now, coming back was complex number two. We're shifting over 15 feet further in. There's no, the units count, that's what it is. The reason why you're seeing all the details because we're, we're focusing now on what is proposed of being constructed now. We, we, we try to keep things as clear as possible.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying it even more.
Very, very welcome.
Okay, thank you. Ally, we'll open to the public now. Do we have any more public? Anybody else?
I only have the one email from Mr. Zines.
Okay, Mr. Jackson or Julian, if you're still here, do we have any more emails?
Not that I'm aware of. Let me double check.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I want to step in for one second.
Okay, give me a second, Mr. Sable. I just want to close it to the public.
No, no more, no more comments that I have by email.
Okay, so I'm closing it to the public and Mr. Sable.
So just a little sidewalk, a comment from leading, I'm going to try to explain this, bring up the map, Ally, bring up the map, the site plan. It's something small, but I think it's important. You can bring up the site plan. So, so leading. I lower down a little more.
Hi, am you there?
Hello?
Hi.
Luzem?
What do we lost?
Hello? I'm here, I'm here.
There you go.
So the sidewalk leading from the parking lot in front of complexes four and three on the right side should be connected to the other sidewalk at the bottom, over the bottom.
Right here?
Okay, and if, and if you continue with that sidewalk going up north and then turning, I guess, west, connecting this one to the building as well. There we go. Can we do that? Mr. Auerbach, I think you want to speak for your meeting.
If you'd like it, we can add it.
Makes you happy, I'll be happy to do it.
That's right.
I'm not, I'm not going to live there, probably.
No, it's not available for rent.
Good. And, and in between, in between building number three and four, can we do a walkway to that big building?
No, no, I, I want to keep, I don't want to encourage, we have to try to contain, I want to keep people where they're supposed to be. I don't want to start then start running bikes back. We want to try to keep all easy access. That's meant for people walking, not for bikes, rollerblades, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Keep it unpaved. Is there any other questions from the board or the public?
Are we required to do a?
You're on mute.
Yes, I was on mute. Okay, I would ask for a motion on, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are we required to do two separate entrances, like RSIS in and out?
I don't know, Terry, are you here?
It's an existing, uh.
Continue application.
Yeah, that, that, that's my feeling as well, Chairman. This, this facility well predates RSIS. I mean, RSIS, I believe, was promulgated 1996. For now, this was back to the early seventies.
Does that even apply to multifamily RSIS?
I, I'm honestly not sure, John.
The comment here is a new application.
Oh, the applications for within the compound that already exists.
Yeah, they're, they're utilizing existing access with, which well predates RSIS.
Mr. Vow, could you, could you talk about the submission waivers that they want a full waiver on, just make sure that you're okay with that?
Yeah, just going back to our letter, but they're relatively minor. Submission to the planning board, Glenn, if he can give us a letter for the files as to why it's exempt, that's fine. Traffic study, I believe Glenn has given testimony. If the board wants any further information, obviously, that's something you can ask for. And finally, the EIS is pretty straightforward, in my opinion, because it's all previously disturbed area.
Okay.
Okay. I would ask for a motion on this application and on the.
I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, and grant, and grant the waivers, right, Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Garfield.
Second.
Okay, second, so roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Is that me?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion approved.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Renner?
Yeah.
Your, your motion was including that sidewalk addition because you said as presented.
Yes.
Yes, of course.
And their testimony.
Yeah, they, they agree to it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, approval of minutes. We have a motion to approve minutes.
Move.
Move, Mr. Meyer, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Garfield, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approval of bills, we have a motion.
Move.
Moved, moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, everybody should have a, a great night. And Ally, when's the next meeting?
February 10th is our next meeting.
Okay, we have a.
February what?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
It comes out on a Tuesday.
And after we have a new president.
Mr. Garfield, do you have our annual calendar from when it was adopted? Do you want me to send you that so you have it? Mr. Garfield, do you want me to send you our annual calendar again?
Yeah, but, okay.
I couldn't hear, sorry. Yes?
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to mail you something, it'll be for Terry, just so you don't want to get it in on market.
Yes, that, that's what, what we talked about on the county approvals, right, Dave?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's great.
Okay, good night, everybody, and hope our country stays, our country stays safe with, with the new president.
Amen.